Welcome to our Midville Planning Commission meeting. It is November 13th and it's 6 o'clock. Let's have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
Chair Erickson is excused. Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Tippett is excused. Commissioner Snow?
Here.
Commissioner Littke?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Casperian is excused.
Thank you. Did we not do minutes? Did we do?
No, we'll do them next time.
Okay. Welcome. And we're already gonna have our first public hearing. Let's do it. It's Zach and Berkeley. You know, I wanna mess that name up pretty bad. I think I'm going--
Meisenbacher.
You say it.
Meisenbacher.
See? They're requesting a preliminary subdivision approval for two lots located at 7526 South Burke Street in a single-family resident duplex overlay. Liz will be presenting.
Okay. So you'll know that a little bit ago-- this is maybe a year ago now-- we changed our subdivisions code. So I think this is the first one that you guys are seeing under our new code. So the review process has changed just a little bit, where we have a new development review committee that's comprised of planning, engineering, a building official, our attorney's office, Public Works-- I think that's everybody-- and fire, the fire department, who all review it. So everyone has reviewed this project and has signed off, and you are now able to approve preliminary plots instead of recommending approval, because the city council doesn't see them anymore. So this is for a lot right over here on Burke Street. You can tell that it's one of those-- that seems to be kind of those double-wide lots that we've seen sometimes. So they're just proposing to divide that into two. And here's a recommended motion again that says that you approve it. But the applicant, the family, is here if you'd like to ask him anything. Any questions for me?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's have the applicant come up. Talk to us. State your name, please.
Zach Meisenbacher.
Thank you. What can you tell us?
We just-- we would like to subdivide the lot and build a secondary duplex on that property. It's really wide, and I find that it would be-- I don't know-- better for our area and for us if we could do that. At the same time of doing that, I would also like to put a light pole somewhere in that area, because it's very dark on that street as well. So that would help with-- hopefully, people actually-- like trick-or-treaters, we've never had one ever. So actually having people come and visit us on our road and our street.
Is there an existing home on the--
There is an existing home on the current property, but it's five feet from property line as is. So the dwelling that would have to be tear down is the actual garage.
Okay.
And so then we're within the requirement lot size for that.
So you're gonna demolish the garage on the existing home and then add on to it to make it a duplex?
Uh, no. It's gonna be a separate house.
Oh, okay.
So we wanna split this lot into two.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Let's open this to our public hearing.
I make a motion to--
Oh, we don't need to make motions, huh? We just open it.
I make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting.
Second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Garrett?
Hi.
Sorry. Not the face you were probably hoping for.
I was really.
Um, so this matter is an administrative item. So if it meets the requirements of the code, the Planning Commission is required to pass it. And if it doesn't, that would be the only reason that it would be allowed to be denied.
Okay.
I like-- I like it. I think it's a great way to build the community and be able to have affordable housing. I mean, you know, relatively speaking, whatever affordable housing is nowadays. But, um, yeah, I like it.
Can I get a motion then?
I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision located at 7526 South Burke Street with the findings included in the staff report.
I'll second the motion.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Snow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It's passed. Thanks. That's it.
That was easy.
That was it?
Take those kids home and put them to bed.
Or go out to dinner and celebrate.
Just rush the main dinner.
Thank you.
We're too nice to freak out.
That's right.
Well, good luck with your project. And have fun.
Okay, next on our agenda is Midville City initiated-- init-- am I saying that right? Request to amend section 16.02-- .020 and 16.02 .030 relating to preliminary subdivisions in section 16.03 .020 and 16.03 .030 relating to final subdivisions. The amendment removes the requirement to show existing structures on plots and instead requires a site plan detailing existing structures as part of the application document. Liz will be sharing with us.
Yes. Well, you summed it up so well. Thank you. Uh, yes. This amendment really just removes the requirement to show existing structures on the final plot that gets recorded at the county offices. I think we've just discussed this internally. We don't think it's best practices to show them, and it would be our preference to remove them. So we'll still require that they submit a document that shows where those existing structures are as part of the application. You'll see that with the changes. I guess I just put one. There should be two. Anyway, it changes for both preliminary and final that we removed that as part of the final plat itself and instead just made it part of the application. So we'll still see where the structures are, whether or not they're gonna remain or be demolished, and then-- but it won't be shown on the final document.
Is that a standard across the county?
That is a county okay with this?
With the cities?
I don't know that there is a county standard for it. I know that, you know, we discussed internally. It was not practices at previous places of employment for us to see those on plots. So I think it's hard, because once the document gets recorded, those buildings can obviously change, and then that's immediately dated. And mostly, we're just trying to see property boundaries and things like that. So valuable information is part of the application, but not necessary for a subdivision plat, that kind of recorded document.
So you're just saying, you know, we don't need to put this on here. Let's say this guy's gonna tear down a garage and--
Right.
If there's a structure on there--
Right.
It doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna stay there, so why have it on? You're just registered in the property line.
Yes.
For the plat.
Yes.
But the application, you'll have the survey which shows where everything sits.
Yes.
If the county's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's-- we'll open this up to the public hearing.
I recommend-- or I motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we--
Garrett? Wait. Garrett?
So this is a legislative item. So if there is feedback or things that you would like staff or the city council to take in consideration, this would be that appropriate time to make those recommendations. And ultimately, you're either recommending approval to the city council or you're recommending denial to the city council.
So looking at plots, it doesn't make sense to have the buildings on it, on the plat itself, because like Liz said, it's obsolete as soon as they tear down the building or modify the building or whatever they're gonna do. And I think it's important in the application process to, you know, make sure that the boundary lines all match and stuff like that. But I don't-- I think it's a good thing.
It's an extra step for the developer to have to do, too. You won't want your Mylar right off the bat.
Say that again?
When we print our site plans, our Mylars, all at the beginning? We'll have to print to a site plan for you guys to approve and then a site plan to record?
No. No, the-- so the Mylar is the-- you know, is the document that gets recorded.
And that's the one we don't want the stuff on?
Right. So, I mean, as part of, you know, the application, you know, there are more pages there. You know, PDF files that normally get emailed in. But what the change does is there's simply on the final-- the final document that subdivides the land in the end--
We just want a minimal--
Yeah. And that's-- stand-- I mean, it's really standard practice. If you have a plat that's so cluttered, I think it has potential to confuse people. Okay?
That makes sense? Answer your question?
Yeah, 'cause--
Great.
I mean, in my industry, we wanna see where the easements lie, where the property lines are, where the roads are. And, you know, we don't care where the houses sit unless there's encroachments and stuff like that, that's on the survey. So-- and they've gotta do a survey anyway, so that'll be part of the application, so.
I can see it both ways.
I move that we recommend approval of the amendment as provided in the attachments with the findings noted in the staff report.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Snow?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Liz. Midville City.
Let's do some staff update.
Yes. This is an unusual week. We had city council meeting yesterday. The meetings were shifted because of the elections. And the city council had three planning-related items that you had recommended to them. The code change on home occupations, which was approved-- it was a housekeeping item, if you remember. Then the change that basically just implemented the zone changes in the form-based code area here downtown. And this change basically just updated the figures that are actually in the code to be consistent with the zoning map. So that was an easy one. And then the transportation master plan, which you had recommended. And if you watched the city council meeting, you may have noticed that the city council actually tabled it. They came across something that they were interested in and wanted to see reflected in the plan a little more. And it was concerning of Fort Union Boulevard and the tracks-- the railroad tracks that cross it. And that, of course, causes a lot of traffic delay. The plan really hasn't gone into the detail of that, and neither was it necessarily meant to. But the consultant is going back. They're looking at that a little deeper, and they'll propose some language.
I don't remember including that, so, yeah. Good catch.
Yeah. So-- and this, I mean, it's interesting. And I don't believe in any of the, you know, hearings, open houses. This has come up from that angle, that someone said, you know, we should look at the tracks and their influence here in specific. And see in the future if we can, you know, somehow change the discussion there. So, anyway, that's-- the immediate update. All of you got this packet that Johnny made. And it has just some updated materials in it. The member list was updated. And if you notice any mistakes on their phone numbers that have changed or email addresses, please let us know. So that we can make sure it's all correct. Then we also have the part of the state law that talks about your training. So you can all, you know, put that in your binder. And then the updated bylaws. Since you changed them, this is your updated paper copy also for you to keep and refer to when you see fit.
Johnny? I found a mistake. ShaneALittke@gmail.com. You just have Shane Littke.
Is that in the member list?
Now that's in the minutes.
And that's in the minutes? What?
I didn't make that.
Oh, well. Did I do it? What? Anyhow--
We'll fix it.
There's an A in between Shane and Littke.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Otherwise, no? Okay. All of you had this book. And I wanted to find out what you thought about it. And from what you've read-- if there are any questions-- Robin shared that she read it with her husband.
I did. Part of it.
Part of it.
So that we could go like this.
Is it appropriate to use the banana and nimby phrases?
I thought that was--
In the meeting? I know, I thought that was okay, too. No, not, okay. Johnny's like, no, that's-- that's like cussing, okay.
There are some things we shouldn't say. Most of the time, I just say them.
Most people probably wouldn't know what they mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, banana is more out there. Nimby, it seems like, it has entered the mainstream a little more.
Be funny.
So--
There was like four of them. Those were the two that stuck out, so.
I know some of them. But it was just a little bit dry humor in some things. And I thought, oh, this made it a little bit more interesting to read.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Did you catch any type of slant in the book?
Slant?
This isn't necessarily an objective textbook, by all accounts, I would say.
I would say.
Not necessarily.
I don't think this would be the one that you would take somewhere and have a test on. Do you see what I'm saying? That you'd read this and go, you'll be tested on this?
So do you think it's slanted towards professional planners, then? Like-- or not for you, but it's slanted to like put you on a pedestal?
No.
Okay, all right.
He's already on one, huh?
Okay.
Remember? Yeah.
I didn't catch a slant.
Okay.
I feel like it's slanted towards the public.
Oh, for sure.
Okay.
And shouldn't it be?
Very, very basic. And, you know, good information, but very basic, and--
Yeah. Okay. So the author, Craig Hall, he was the property rights ombudsman for the state of Utah. And so if I look at it-- but that may be my personal bias-- I feel like it tips sometimes a little more towards the developer's side. But that's debatable. So-- and it seems like if you've looked at the foreword to it, he does say a couple things along those lines. So I feel like, yeah, I can see where you're coming from. And the property rights ombudsman, I don't know how familiar you are with their role. When a developer has an issue with the city, they can go to the ombudsman's office, present the issue. The ombudsman's office will sort of be a little bit of an intermediary. They can issue advisory opinions. And I don't know, Garrett, if you know more about the whole process. I don't think anyone has to pay anything, but if something goes to court, then the ombudsman's opinion, I think, you know, enters that process, too.
So this has been an area that's been changing over the years. Previously, the ombudsman's primary-- primary role was to provide advisory opinions to let both parties kind of have an outside third party say, this is where things sit with these land use issues. It was either a year or two ago that that was expanded, that if someone receives a negative advisory opinion and continues to move forward with litigation, and then the district court agrees with the ombudsman's office, that they would be subject to attorneys-- paying attorneys' fees. I think unfortunately, that has now been limited to municipalities are the only parties who will pay attorneys' fees if they're wrong. But so it has-- those opinions have had more importance in recent years than they previously had. And so-- and that area continues to kind of get negotiated and changed a little bit every year.
So if the city pursues it, and it's in a negative opinion to the city, and the city appeals it to the district court and they lose, then they have to pay the developer's attorney's fees and their own attorney?
Yes.
But if the developer appeals it, he doesn't have to pay the city's attorney fees? He just pays his own?
That's my understanding of the most recent way that that law was amended.
So it's interesting.
Helps prevent a little bit of abuse of power if there was any.
Yeah. So another interesting premise that he brings up, and I wanted to find out if you've thought about this and what your opinion is. This is in the foreword, actually. He says, "Land use controls have evolved over time, and they are based on a premise that some would really call fiction." The concept is that the community, together in a democratic process, determines what it would like to be.
I would have to agree with that.
Pardon me?
I would have to agree with that.
That it's-- you think it's fiction? Okay. And--
I think buying something, you never 100% know what you can put on it until you have it approved and in writing. It's fiction.
So I think the point he is making here is that he thinks that this is truly democratic process is fiction to him. So-- the next sentence here says, "Various proposals for land uses are sorted out, and the consensus supposedly develops, which results in a community that are considered to be optimal." And so if we think about our whole process, you know, we have public hearings, but we don't, you know, look at tonight. The people who are affected possibly by it, you know, aren't here, the neighbors. But I think that's just a fact of life. You look at our elections, you know, our participation rates are never 100%. It don't even come close.
Do we think the public thinks that it's democratic, what we're doing here? Do you think that when the public hearings and we have people-- I mean, you know, and then we all say, yeah, we approve it, and 98% of the audience is against it. I'm sure that they feel like it's--
I feel like they only care after the fact.
Yeah. And I think, you know, that's another-- I think as the city and you as commissioners, I guess we need to think about how we communicate, you know, how the process is democratic. And of course, it's not perfect. But it is, you know, the groundwork when the laws are created, against which you as commissioners and we as staff judge projects, that's really where the democracy comes in. That's, you know, that's the legislative act. Then the next step is applying the law. And that is not a democratic process. That's a technical process. And you can see oftentimes how I think the citizens do confuse a lot of that, especially with the public hearings. And then some of that is, you know, there are mixed messages, especially when we have public hearings, even though it's an administrative process. An administrative means really that we are just judging by what's on record, there's no legislative act involved. And we have worked on that a little bit, as much as we can, to get away from sort of that mixed message. But we still in practice, and now in the city code, that's still quite ingrained that we hold hearings for everything, even though we aren't really required to. But it's a preference the city council has. One thing that also comes out in here, I think that's very pertinent to everyone involved. It's really the balancing act of, you know, the right that the community as a whole has, you know, embodied by you and the city council and sometimes by staff. If your authority has been delegated to us, let's, you know, think about, let's say, a building permit. So to balance that with property rights, you know, the United States, property rights are really deeply ingrained. Where I come from, property rights exist, too. But it's-- the balance is just slightly different. It's not, you know, the-- I guess the principle that if you own property, you also, you have a responsibility that's towards everyone else. That's elevated a little more here, I guess, where I come from, than you would commonly think about that in the United States, I think. So-- yeah, so that's sort of the groundwork here in the book, the foundations, I think. Then I wanted to ask you about the following. On page nine, I don't know if any of you noticed that there is a list of resources. And that's always a list where you can look at things, learn things, and most of these, I think I've shared before with you. For example, the land use training. For example, the land use training at luau dot utah dot gov, property rights at utah dot gov. That's the property rights ombudsman. So if you ever want to sort of delve more into, you know, process related issues, legal things, that's where you'd want to look. You know, the Utah State Code, you can easily Google that if you wanted to look at it. And, um, on page eleven. There is, I thought, some, an interesting thought for you to also contemplate in your mind a little bit. So this is, you know, chapter one, land use planning is, and then he has several headings here in the book. And it actually says, the land use planning process is informal. So what, what is your take on that? And then maybe you can hear from Garrett and see what his take is on that.
Can you repeat that question?
Um, it's, we're just talking about the book says that the land use planning process is informal. And I wanted to, and Michael said.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's interesting that they say it's informal. I mean, we're here, this is pretty formal, it's a minuteed meeting. And so I guess like by contrast, the writer is an attorney. And so I think that he's saying that that makes it like, that that arena is more formal than this. So it was interesting that he, he calls this informal. This is maybe the most formal thing I do in my life. So it's interesting, he says it's informal.
What makes it informal informal?
Because we aren't true, like we are not like professionals in this space, that we are citizens. So he, he, he says that's informal. Did I get that right?
Yeah, that's, that's how I took the comment, yeah.
It also is funny that final decisions are in the hands of us. I don't think that's the case at all.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, but.
It depends.
Like the administrative one today, I mean, that was our decision.
So the, on the preliminary plan, for example, today, that, that is your decision.
Right.
And your project can't move forward really if the preliminary plan isn't approved. The, the way, in, in that example, once the preliminary is approved, then the final now is handled by the development review committee, which is comprised of staff. And, um, and then Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, at that point as staff, we are the land use authority, but that's really a delegated power we have, right?
Yes, with the, uh, with the exception of a few things that have been required to be given to you. I mean, I'm primarily thinking in the subdivision process now, where the state has removed that from the planning commission for, and the city council in certain aspects of those approvals, that it now has to be staff.
Yep, thank you.
And, and if I may comment, so I don't think it's informal because you're not professionals. I mean, you're all trained, you all are familiar with the process. I think it's probably more informal, again, not because it's also not structured, because this is clearly structured, right? There's rules, there's procedures that everyone follows. But when you are discussing legislative items or administrative items, there's a lot more conversation that's going on where it's not so structured and there's not things like rules of evidence or things like that, that when I'm in the neighboring part of this building in court, everything I do is very, it's, it's more than structure. There are rules that I have to follow with everything that I do. Certain things, if they don't meet a certain threshold, I cannot introduce to a jury, I cannot introduce to a judge. I can't even comment on them without committing malpractice, right? And so this is a lot more forgiving of a process where it's intended to be collaborative. It's intended to draw out information and to make better decisions in a way that even the public can come and engage with. And it's not so formal to say, you violated this rule, go sit down, we're not listening to you. Or all you told us was something emotionally or whatever it may be, go sit down. It, it is intended to engage people without any sort of specific rules to be able to gain information and hopefully make a better outcome.
And so, I mean, sometimes you, one, one sees how this, this world sort of intrudes into the process. I mean, you probably remember the zone change on nine hundred east, we had some attorneys get up and present, you know, a very structured comment. However, I'm not sure that, you know, they represent clients, that that wasn't highly spun. For example, I remember that one of the attorneys made the comment that we are violating our general plan, but however, the general plan is an advisory document.
I, I remember they would dismiss, they went through each criteria and like said, you know, you don't fulfill this, you don't fulfill this.
So, um, so don't, I mean, I guess don't be intimidated by, by that because, you know, as Garrett also said, this, this process is a lot less structured. Of course, sometimes it has also disadvantages if someone comes with an attorney. Then, you know, the way the ordinances sometimes are, they may be able to find something and say, but this wasn't done correctly, this wasn't done correctly. But that's, that's just a fact of life. So.
I thought it was interesting when it said the public meeting, that anybody had the right to record the meeting? Anybody?
Yes.
Yeah, Shane's email's on it now, so.
Yeah, really.
And sometimes that happens. I'm there, Adam, and I used to work for a while. There were people who came with a, wasn't it like, like a really old school?
Real to real.
Yeah, and they were sitting in city council meetings and recording everything.
Wow.
So, yeah.
And hopefully that's not a surprise that you're being recorded and this is on YouTube right now.
I was just gonna say. And you can get the old ones too, yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah, so, I mean, but, but the public is intended, I mean, that's the part of the public hearing when we do the open public meetings act is they're welcome to attend, they're welcome to listen. And only when, like, public hearings tonight are they provided the opportunity to also provide feedback.
Right.
And so, um, in, in the book here, it goes into, it contrasts public meetings versus public hearings. So, public meeting doesn't imply that the public actually has a right to speak. That's what the hearing is for. And a public meeting needs to be advertised. If something isn't on the agenda, we really can't discuss it. So that's why the agenda is important. If you do, then, you know, the, let's say the project, that it's, the discussion is about, there's a proper node, it's basically that's the two sides. And of course, in order to have a public meeting, you need a quorum, which in our case would be three commissioners. Also, we can't act. Any other questions on, on this chapter here? No?
Well, one comment, thing that keeps going through my mind when you said it's, um, you talked about it being a democratic process and stuff. And, and I remember a comment once from a member of the public that, that said that as commissioners, we don't matter because we were not voted in. And it was quite, said in quite an offensive way. And as I've thought about that, it's like, yeah, we weren't voted in by the public, but we were voted in by who the public voted for as city council and as mayor. And they voted to have us on this. And so in, in that way, it was very diplomatic and, you know, we were voted in. And if they don't like how we manage ourselves, then they can always go to the city council and ask us to be removed. And just like they can ask to have a city council member removed, you know, and impeached or whatever. But, you know, I've, I've often thought of that, that, um, you know, we do matter.
Yeah, not, not any different than the secretary of state.
Yeah.
Except it's the city council, not the senate.
Yeah.
So, yeah, um, one, a couple of items in this chapter I wanted to point out is the following, the under the heading legal here, he goes so on page fifteen. He talks a little bit about how zoning came about, you know, the first Supreme, Supreme Court case, the village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty. That's sort of one of the founding cases for zoning, that is established zoning. And, um, the, the way how what the city does interacts with the legal system is that he uses the term differential. So normally that means when the city, let's say approves the zone change, it's very hard for someone to say, hey, you didn't do this right. And it makes sense because the city creates law. And when you create law, the, you know, the mechanisms within the legal system are different. So. Any other questions on, on this part? Anything that stuck out to anyone? Seems, oh, you know, relatively understandable, I think, when, when someone thinks about it. So the, maybe the last couple of things here. Is that at times, we as the city and you as a commission, we need to be very careful about the process that we use and that we stick to the processes how they are, you know, laid down in our own code, which is our law. And, you know, of course, that all interacts with the state law. And so he says on page twenty here, however, well, let me start on page nineteen. So I'm not saying that he's talking about you, number one, but listen to this. So citizen planners will often just look for the desired result and attempt to get there without a lot of complication. However, that approach can be fatal if a faulty process is used because that more often than not creates an exposure to legal liability and damages for the local government. So I think what we need to remember all of us is that, let's say, when, when there is a project we're thinking about or a zone change or whatever it may be, that our comments are packed to an argument. That we don't say, oh, I don't like this, this is not my preference. Rather, I don't think the zone change is appropriate because it doesn't implement the policy we followed in our general plan or because it's not efficient in what we try to accomplish in our city, as an example. So, I mean, and that's, you know, I think that also goes back to helping the public understand how things are really decided on, that there are rules behind this. And this, this, it's, it's a systematic approach. It's not, you know, due to our whims here, it's, there is the system behind it.
It's not an arbitrary.
Right.
Just because we're in a mood.
Yeah, exactly. And, and sometimes citizens feel that way, especially when things are maybe more controversial and the whole neighborhood comes out and it's, you know, easy to feel that way, I think. So, yeah, any, anything else? I, those were the, sort of the main points I wanted to just bring up with you.
I thought it was interesting in the, talking about you guys as professionals, it talks about how oftentimes you have more long-term views. And I thought that was interesting, considering some of the things that we've looked at, so.
I picked that up too, because I thought they have, they see a lot more than we do in some of this. And we seem to be a little bit short-sighted sometimes. Do you feel that way, a little bit when you're sitting here? But these guys have been, they see the big picture.
Yeah.
Well, and generally you've been around for decades, some of you, and now.
Have you all that old?
Very few of you, but, um, you know. Some of, you know, some of our pri, their predecessors, your predecessors have been here for twenty years or more. And so they saw kind of how they have that history and what it took to make that sausage and what pitfalls to watch for moving forward and stuff like that. And so you have a lot of wisdom that we need to respect.
And that's often, I mean, that's the role of staff, that, you know, because we are not, you know, as much subject to some of the pressures that they, especially the city council has. Where, you know, there's a constant, you know, back and forth with the public.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, you'll be coming.
Thank you. Is that it?
I had a question real quick. I can get a short answer. It says, doing homework in here prior to the meeting. Can you drive around with another commissioner to look at property? Um, I, so, yes, because you're not a quorum. The one thing that I would caution about though is deliberating. Um, I, I think the, my memory of the, of the planning commission bylaws is that there shouldn't be ex parte conversations and things going on outside of these meetings. I think that's also inclusive of, of the, as, of you as well, that it's okay to make note of factual observations, but if it's going into, I really think we should recommend no because and things like that, that is probably best reserved for the body as a whole, where everyone can be a part of that conversation and hear those reasons. But I, but I don't think if two of you are neighbors or whatever and say, hey, do you want to drive by that upcoming application and just drive by it and look and say, hey, that's interesting, that the, this is here, this is here, I didn't know this. I think those are okay, but if it's gonna be, what are we gonna do at our next mission meeting, that's probably inappropriate.
Okay, that is? Okay, thank you very much.
I moved that we adjourned the meeting at six forty-seven PM.
Aye.